Okay. This is the Dyson Historical Commission, my nominee, July 14th, 2020, at Town Hall. Calling the meeting to order at 6:59 PM. There are no scheduled hearings or public input tonight. Recording of the meeting will be accessible on the down deck in the Puccino for later viewing. We're all sitting here tonight. We have our masks with us, but we are sitting six feet apart for appropriate social distancing. So with that, I'll be calling again. The Secretary's report, did everyone have a chance to review it? Okay. I have just on the top cam, so this meeting was recorded, being zoomed and is available to public viewing. So that is one thing to change. And then down in the business, we were talking about the Dyson's Master Plan for 2014, which quote and saying we are on the right track, just to leave that because we record what was done, not what was said.
That's it, okay.
I know that's your training. Well, entertain the motion to... Does anyone else have any other questions or anything about the minutes? Okay, well, I'm gonna give the motion to accept as amended.
I move.
Second. Okay, call of favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. I'm signing those and... And what I've been doing is just seeing and sending them to so... Tonight is July 4th, and it's a reorganization of officers. We got Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Clerk, and Vice against on the right schedule of things. Since we're almost full of work. So. I am more than willing to move Chair if anyone else wants it.
I don't want it. Yeah, it's a hard job.
Yes, I know me.
Okay. You want to make?
I know me.
All right, hands down, maybe myself, Pat Nails, is there a second?
I'll second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Call of opposed? Any extensions, the ayes have it. Vice Chair presently is Rafa.
I know me, Rafa, let me mean, Vice Chair. Woo! I'll second.
Oh, we have a motion nominated Rafa for Vice Chair. Call of favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions, great. Secretary clerk, right now on the scan.
I move to keep Pam.
I'll second that.
Third.
Okay.
Thank you.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Call of opposed? Any extensions, the ayes have it. And we have our Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary until next July. Hopefully, I call it as well. Okay. With our budget, our gaming order went in because of discretionary spending. I had to cut a few items, which I shared with you. So the order was placed for $166.16. A partial order has come in. Oh, and I had to encumber the funds from FY '20 into FY '21 so that we would be able to spend last year's money on this. So I did do that with the town accounting. But we do have the bill for the partial. We got some inter-leading cable, which is to go between fins, and some polyester newspaper sleeves to put some poster newspaper things that we have involved in. So the bill right now is $7,684. So we just need to approve to spend that.
No way.
Way.
It's a hard time.
I know me to pay the bill for $7,684.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions, the ayes have it. Okay, so I need two signatures, Pat and Rafa. While they're doing that, that's kind of being our budget of $2,000 for FY '21 was approved. Just the information, so we're all set for FY '21 right now. Moving on to unfinished business. 9:49, so I've got the James Briggs House, I met with the town administrator Mallory, and the James Briggs House is going on the surplus sales auction list, along with other items that the town was auctioning. She began to write the scope for the bid process, and it was just a very...
That same, huh?
Yeah, the sign under that same. It was becoming very large and very cumbersome and kind of convoluted. So she looked at it again and figured the easiest way to get it out is through the auction of surplus sales, which will be held within the timeline, and will reach a much wider audience too for that. So, I would say, okay, I would share that with all of you. So then, Rafa, you can put in the... Does anyone have any questions about the Briggs House? We're good? Okay. You would put in the branch for the most endangered historic resources?
Yes.
Okay, so that was...
Yeah, I was gonna choose back in 2017.
Okay. We haven't heard anything yet, have we?
It's gonna take a while, probably in the long distance. Probably the house still standing there then.
Okay.
It's gone, definitely not.
All right, the Boston Post cane. I sent you some information that I found. I also talked with Mallory, I talked to her about the Boston Post cane, because we were talking about giving the award, we were talking about a case for it. And I was like, well, talking about all of this stuff, especially the case, we should really talk about where it's gonna be going and before we start building cases of things for things. So anyway, in our discussion, Dyson still has their Boston Post cane, as we know, and it's at Council on Aging right now. So she recommended that we vote to recommend to the selectmen, because they ultimately are trying to the Boston cane program. We recommend to the selectmen that the cane be moved to the town vault as soon as possible for, say, the people. I mean, it's been fine at the Council on Aging, but it's just, that's a more appropriate place for it to be. We also should recommend to the selectmen that we want to display for it with the plaques of the recipients that have it and all of that, because they are a target of the town properties. In talking about it, she suggested that, you know, check with West Bridgewater, and I did send you that information. And they actually had a, like a memorandum, that listed the responsibilities for both the selectmen and the commission as far as the Boston Post cane program went. So it's to honor a citizen of Dyson who is the oldest citizen. And that, you know, like, who defines the criteria, that the commission does a lot, and I don't know if you read it, that what we're responsible for securing, like, you know, a pin or the materials, and that they would host the award ceremonies with the West Bridgewater. But it gave us clear, I think it gave the West Bridgewater Commission clear direction as to what their responsibility was for the Boston Post cane award. So in that vein, today I went to Town Hall to look at our files to see if I could find anything that was similar to that. And I couldn't, I didn't. So. Dan, I'm sorry.
You mean similar, you mean Dyson?
Dyson.
Okay, so you don't have any kind of...
Not that I could find.
Run mine, Google search.
Right, I did find one folder that had Boston Post cane stuff in it that I brought. And basically, it was just an award certificate that they gave, and a description of the Boston Post cane. So I think before we really get into, you know, that, giving out awards, that we need to have the policies and the responsibilities and everything in place first.
Where's the ultimate display though, where are we going with?
Well, see, that would be up to the selectmen to decide, I would think. I see it blanked all, but right over there that.
Yeah, you gotta display it.
So, you know, we could recommend that it be, you know, placed...
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can make up a list of recommendations and then load on that and can get it to them. And also to have our criteria set. I did talk to the town clerk from Dennis, and they do a certificate and a replica pin, and they will help him. They use the voter registration list just like we do here. They look at the length of time in town and history of the person in town throughout that length of time. It's presented at a board of selectmen's meeting, and they get some data about the person and their life to include in the celebration. They do their awards in the fall, and simply because they don't want to be awarding anything in the winter, when it's harder for someone who's senior plus, I guess, you know.
Okay. This, can we back up a little? Let's still talking about the Boston.
Yeah.
Give my overings. When, when did, well, Dyson would have gotten their cane around the same time that everybody else did.
In 1909, all the towns got the canes, yes.
And does Dyson still have its original cane?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's pretty awesome.
That's the one that's at the Council on Aging, and we want to recommend to move to the vault, yes. We are one of the fortunate towns that still have their cane. Many towns lost it, because they actually used to give the cane to the recipient to use in their everyday life. Well, you know, people forgot that it belonged to the town, and they were supposed to give it back, you know, when the recipient passed away. Because it's theirs until they pass away.
Never affects. Here on eBay, I don't know.
So how long has Dyson been doing this sort of virtual cane, instead of actually someone possessing the cane, that cane?
I do believe, Pat, you might be able to...
So it's been some time since actually someone got the physical cane and keep it for...
I don't know when, I don't know when that started, the physical. I know I have seen the cane, the cane was brought to one of the commission meetings many years ago.
Right.
I was gonna ask if you wanted to get your hands on it just to show people, because we're spending time talking about it, so.
It's beautiful.
It's very ornately, yeah.
So, so where's, I think, where's it now?
At Council on Aging.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so just, just to be clear, is the commission gonna recommend to the BOs that we follow some of all of these West Bridgewater things, or?
We would, that's kind of what we're talking about now, is, you know, to put some criteria together to make... I think tonight, we should recommend that the cane be moved, so that can be done. And then I think if we have a working committee, also when I was talking with Mallory, she said that we can meet as long as we don't have a quorum of people needing money. So given that we're six people right now without our vacancy, if we had committees of two working on things to get things done, I think we'd be able to get and then bring it back. So what I would like to see is some people working on the criteria, maybe doing some research on getting a pin made. Both West Bridgewater and Dennis use this jewelry, Lendström, Joseph jewelry, but they've gone out of business to make the pin. But I'm sure that there is a company out there, because they make memorabilia pins all the time.
I'd be interested in that committee, if that makes sense.
Okay. I'm interested in the act that's gonna work, so... Is anybody else?
Well, do you want to keep it to two, or I'd be interested if you want that three?
If you guys wanna, do you wanna take off with the whole thing and just do the criteria and the pin? And I'll work with anybody. I think, you know, I'm thinking about even trophy companies that make those pins. You can obviously find someone local, hopefully, that can make those pins. But yeah, you know, Blue Mountain has those pins, everyone has those pins that you collect them.
Right.
So, yeah, that's, I think that'd be fun.
Pat, again, you'll go for it.
So you backing up, huh?
I'll do any, you know...
Can I tell you my thought now, because hey, you don't want me on this little committee? This person is in their 90s. I think they need a little bit like, I don't really think that they would think that that was important. To have a ceremony, yes, to have a very nice something, a proclamation or whatever, and to them, two flowers, one of your letters mentioned, flowers, proclamation. And the fact that they're at the board of selectmen meeting, I wouldn't be interested, I don't think it's important to give them a little souvenir of the cane. I don't personally.
I think this is nice and visual, so you know, the flowers, the proclamation, you know, the gold seal.
They're being acknowledged, I mean, we're certainly, you know, not trying to take anything away from that, so they, they're being acknowledged, but they, I don't really think, when you're in your 90s, you're concerned about getting a pin.
Okay. Any other?
Makes sense.
Yeah, I'll try again. So for Dyson, we just recommend to the selectmen to be making a nice ceremony.
Yes.
Yeah.
Champagne, caviar.
Well, there's champagne, yeah.
A lot of heavy drinkers in that hundred.
Yeah. I was gonna say, Billy, you close to getting the cane though.
All right, so Dan and Pat, if you can work on the criteria for that. And sure, we could, I mean, it's fairly simple, I think. It's only 90s, that's...
I'm guessing, you might know somebody 101. I'm just saying, when you're at that age, I don't think...
West Bridgewater had 107.
107.
Well, Ken Chico had posted that his one was 104.
Yes, yes.
Now, not resident, but, yeah. So, I don't know, so it'd be fun, I think.
Has anyone ever rejected a cane?
Yes, there have been people that, yes, just they consider it the death step.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. They'll say, no, I don't mind that. Well, I think they do.
Can we move on to number two, three? We just keep going down this, right?
Right. So the charge, I guess, to the committee would be to finalize the criteria that we want for Dyson. Do you want to take on doing the display case piece of it too?
I think it's a part of Dyson's history, and I'm all for displaying the original. But I just thought maybe you could get it and bring it next month, just to show people. But I'm all for, it's beautiful, and I think it should be displayed somewhere.
Oh, yeah. No, but the display case is like a totally separate, like, I think we should move on on our criteria and getting the roles, like our roles, clarify with the selectmen, do that. All right, let's step back a moment. I'll entertain a motion to recommend to the selectmen to move the Boston Post cane from the Council on Aging to the vault at Town Hall.
Temporary.
Until the display case, that's what I'll...
Okay.
Until the display case can be made.
I'll, I'll second.
No one?
You gotta make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
But I'll second.
Temporarily move the cane from the Council on Aging to our vault.
And I second that.
Until the display case is built. Okay. Now, the second piece is...
You're gonna vote?
Oh, you gotta vote, right? I'm gonna become the parliamentarian. Call of favor?
Aye.
Call of opposed? Any extensions? Okay.
Who's going to build this guy?
Well, that's...
You're gonna volunteer?
Volunteer.
Yeah, we'll see.
Are you volunteering right now?
All right, now.
Can I get one from Dave here?
Dan made a beautiful garden, Rafa.
What?
Dan's garden, the name is beautiful, so volunteer. I don't know, we've talked, maybe the Aggie kids or...
The Aggie kids.
Sure.
I know, we already talked to Tom Ferry about it, and you could talk to BP. I don't know if Dyson Hope does it, but it could be an equal style project too, that I do, you know? So there are some, some things to do. I would like to see if we could get the presentation done, like in September, so all of the paperwork is, you know, obviously with the board, that would be cool. So the next piece would be to... Did anyone look at West Bridgewater's memorandum to the... Any comments about it, if you think it's adaptable to Dyson's, to Dyson?
Yes.
The only, we said the town clerk would be the next official member of the commission on matters pertaining to the cane. I don't know if we need that one. She's the contact for the age for the, listing for the voter registration for the age of the citizen. Oh, okay. So maybe we do an EFRS. And shall provide the pertinent information to the commission on appropriate. And then this one says that the commission shall define a criteria on which the cane will be awarded. The commission shall contact the proposed recipient and applicable family members. They should pass along the name, the commission, the name of the resident to the board, and be responsible, we're not gonna do a pin, but be responsible for the materials needed for the ceremony. And the board, the board shall put the ceremony conjunction with the commission, and the commission will notify the recipient of the details. And then the last one was securing the cane from the town. And we're not giving the cane until we take that out. I think that that, that's what we're gonna recommend, I can put that together and get that to the board of selectmen. All right, so entertain a motion to recommend the cri... The role of the commission for cane to the Boston Post cane criteria to the selectmen?
I'll move to make a recommendation similar to the Bridgewater memorandum, with the edits discussed at the beginning.
I'll second. Call of favor?
Aye.
Call of opposed? Any extensions? The ayes have it. Now, the display case, that's probably gonna be a little bit more long term. So because our committee want to take that on too.
When you spoke to the other, to the historic commissions, what do they do?
They have display cases with the plaque, the recipient's names. They're very cool looking. I think there was a picture. I don't know, I think West Bridgewater, one of the catchings was a picture of their plaque. Very nice looking, very well done. You know, and it's just a simple, you know, case for the cane. Glass of sculpture.
It's the end, you wanna...
You wanna be...
Maybe this, because the end has all the engraving, this is just plain. But it's right here, it's the ball of the cane, it's really...
Because it has a Dyson, very modern, the tree has a Dyson, very modern, yeah. I think it was West Bridgewater and other places, they do replica kings, and they cost between $300 and $400 a piece.
So I'll stick to the flowers and the plaque, I mean, the proclamation.
All right, so our committee will work out the ceremony details and the criteria, and turn the criteria back to us in August, that we hope to award in September. I guess we would have to wait to make sure that the selectmen, our board, yes.
One question on the cane. Does someone have the honor of being the cane's notary? Now, or is...
No, no, the last time it was given out was in 2016. And it's Sister Marie Theresa, her name.
From the final...
And upon, it was being sent, passed away, and she is dead. And it has not been given out since then.
But doesn't she, whoever is, keep possession of the cane, sort of possession of the cane, until they pass on or decide not to?
Yeah, she's gone, she passed.
Oh, she don't?
Yeah.
So what, was it someone's work since that time?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, you know. Pat, you would know more than you...
Why someone wasn't chosen, it just...
Didn't have a great memorandum, like, to record it to the selectmen.
That's it? It won't happen again, right?
No, that's the goal, so we don't have this gap again. Right. I guess we should also recommend to the selectmen that they have a display, you know, a display case. And that it be placed in...
And place a prominence.
And place a prominence. Do I have a motion to that?
I move to recommend to the selectmen that they finance or procure a display case for the Boston Post cane, and place it in a place of prominence from the town.
But who selects the case, or who picks it out, or...
No, it does.
They do, or selectmen?
Yeah.
They may not have as good taste as we do.
That's, that's a given, no. No, we can see, can we, uh...
Should we add with bills, with votes, to get them?
Where do we say, um... Would we be able to...
Well, the other way is we...
Yeah.
Does it come out of our budget?
Right.
Then we should pick it up.
Right.
Are we, are we, I may, I would like to strike a motion.
Okay, well, withdraw it.
Or we can all go against it if you want, just so we have one thing we can approve.
Withdraw it, right?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion.
Sky is drawn.
So we'd be paying for the cases, so we don't need to ask them if I case them, we have to ask them to...
Display it to the board.
Right, right.
So we have, what's our current motion on the cane? That it just be placed temporarily in...
The vault until the display case is, is done.
Okay, so I would make a motion that upon the historical commission procuring a case for the Boston Post cane, it be prominently displayed in town. And that we recommend that to the selectmen.
Can I second that?
Okay, so the motion is upon the historical commission procuring a case for the Boston Post cane, that it prominently displayed in town.
All right, that's our recommendation to the selectmen.
Right. Right. Okay, Paul and Baker?
Aye.
Paul and Post? Your extensions? The ayes have it. Okay. Alright, that brings us to the, I always want to say the name, who's that, my son's name? Matt Ranos.
You're buying it for your parents' home?
Oh, for your son. So, um, that's meaning that, um, we had Bill and Rafa agreed to be a committee for that. So again, according to the town history, if we can report back to the commission about hosting, we can have these open meetings as long as the group is less than before. So, um, feel free to do that and then report to us.
Well, we haven't met about it, because...
No, no. What I'm saying is feel free to meet and, you know, report us to us.
Okay.
Um, the commission goals. Does it have an addition to make? Under goal one, to complete the identification and inventory to town's historical significant homes, areas that are moving monuments. Under goal three, to collaborate with the Town Historical Society and Building Commission on Historic Home Identification. I'd like to add the town, the town historian to that. So that it's in writing that we will also collaborate with the town historian. I certainly, this list of people to collaborate doesn't really limit you to just those people, but those are suggestions, so. Any thoughts? Motion? Okay, our same motion to edit our goals. I make a motion to edit the goals. To collaborate with the town historian. What is that?
To collaborate with the town.
Yeah, where, it would be collaborate with the town historian and Historical Society and Building Commission on Historic Home Identification. Is there a second?
One second.
Any other discussion? Paul and Baker?
Aye.
Paul and Post? Your extensions? The ayes have it. Okay. Preservation Plan. Mine. Our goals right now, I guess, serve as kind of the basis for our preservation plan. And of course, the more meeting I do, the more I get into the, oh, holy, oh, my. But while I was at Town Hall, somewhere looking for information on the Boston Post cane, I came across from, what, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, um, the Town Dyke Community Preservation Plan. And it looks, it was written by the Historical Commissioner at that time. And I was scanning this and sending it to everybody, I don't even have the time today. But it talks about, um, the profile of guidelines, historic resources, the preservation efforts to date, and some of their, their preservation goals. Now, this is in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, kind of struck that we're still working on these same goals. Um, one is an inventory of historic resources in town focusing on Native American resources, the agricultural resources, and the two industrial areas developed during the eighteen hundreds. Another one is, um, to increase awareness among the town's residents and surrounding, um, communities, which we have. One of our goals. Talk about the demolition, um, the delay by law. And we also talk about this, the inventory of the homes which we're working on. The informing property owners about, you know, consented to preserve their barns and their, their homes. At the town, the town clerk at that time had expressed concern about the historic town documents and it's stored in the vault in the basement. There should be catalogued and preserved, and we're working on that. So from two thousand eleven to twenty twenty, you know, we're making baby steps, but we're, we're on the same path as, um, the previous historical commission. They identified critical issues. One was the Council Oak. And the number of the homes that were being demolished.
We just surprised no potatoes are established back then to actually create this, uh, inventory project for all houses.
Right.
Ten years ago, ten years ago. What's went wrong? What happened?
I don't know. So we're working on, and, oh, while I was there too, you know, as I'm looking through the doors, there are, I mean, three, four notebooks that had information on historic homes there. That I, I haven't seen before, so I just don't know who you were related. There's a lot of information there, from old minutes to, um, things that they were working on. So it might really be foolish if we start to read some of what's been done. But there was a white notebook that had, um, form Bs in it. There was another, two notebooks that had some form, some forms in there. I'm not sure if there were Bs or Cs, um, and notes. So. I started working on comparing the tax list and, um, with the street list and the Magnus list. And I got through, so now I've identified the ones that, um, the Magnus list that, um, appear on our tax list. And what I wanna do is have, eventually get that tax list with all the street names, a listing, which I think once I get into Excel, is able to sort it. So we know which homes have to be put on to Magnus that are not there. And there's quite a few from there, a hundred years old, that don't have any forms or an inventory. Does anyone have any preservation ideas, you know, things that they wanna work on?
Preservation ideas?
Just what, what are your thoughts on ideas? Where do you see us going on some of that conversation?
I was just wondering about, uh, well, I guess I'm skipping to a different. I guess we talked a little bit about, uh, cataloging important properties in some meaningful way, you know, consolidating. And occasionally I talk with, um, Myrna, but not about open meeting issues. But she's, I did mention to her that one of my visions was to integrate knowledge between her and us and the, like, Historical Society as well. I didn't get any response from her, she may not be, uh, you know, for whatever reason.
I agree with you. I think there has to be collaboration between, our, our interest is common. And the task of collaboration between the town historian, Historical Commission, and Historical Society is very important. In fact, the Historical Society met on last Wednesday. And I remember that, and I spoke to the group about the collaboration and about the efforts that we were doing. And they are very interested in working with us. Certainly, you know, a sharing of information within, you know, like, what I see is the same kind of thing, you know, an end product that lists everything that we can share. The commission have a copy, the society have a copy. And perhaps even putting it at the library so that the public can have a copy of it too.
I'd like to have it online if possible too, sometimes it's a little ambitious idea. Because you'd have to have some fancy databasing and so forth. I don't know how, come, it could be simple, either it's online somewhere, a Dyke website or something, Facebook, not Facebook, but, where you could see not only a simple Excel sheet thing that, like, what I extracted.
Right.
But a more, um, detailed of the, and, and maybe a qual, you have some metrics, you have a quality factor associated with it, how it's depending on, on many things. And, um, it would be more transparent rather than, so that the public in the town could actually get a feel for what, what is here.
Right, right.
But, I mean, that's, that's further down the road because it has to be designed, uh, your web, web type.
Yeah, and we have to get the information that we need to put on that.
Need the information first.
Right.
So, and so, it seems like the historian has a lot of stuff. The, we have some stuff at Town Hall. And, um, Historical Society, I know, has stuff. The trouble is getting all three to cooperate together to, yes, so. Uh, I didn't get anything back from Myrna on that one, so I'm not gonna present it, but she's... I, I think she's with the spirit of the thing. She may not... She's had some issues with the Historical Society.
The idea of collaboration for a common goal is good. And I think we're all on the same page, and the Society indicated that they, you know...
Well, the Historical Commission, us, we could act as sort of the, uh, the hub. So, you know, that way you don't broke feathers along the way. I don't know, it's just a suggestion.
So what I see that needs to be done is we have to take all of our information sources, take the information that I'm looking at it, I hope to finish getting into the database, then compare it to the forms that are in the catalog at, um, Town Hall. Compare it to the lately work that Myrna did, you know, it's really fabulous. Compare it there. Always looking to fill in the holes and then also looking with, at the Historical Society, what they have to fill in the holes, you know, so that we have a total scope of everything that we can identify, speaking of historical home, cemetery, monument, whatever our resources are.
So we, we would like catalog that stuff, like what you just mentioned, maybe? And, and then update the other two, the historian and the periodic one?
Right, everyone would get, yeah.
That way everybody says, oh, here's the latest that the commission's cataloging, how's this look?
Here's track number one. Here's number three, you know? Yeah. It's gonna be an ongoing project, and, you know, as time goes on, there will always be more information too. So, as you can see, I'm passionate about this inventory thing, so I am willing to work on the inventory. Anybody else?
Well, I definitely mean, but I'm working on it.
Alright, so, um, yeah, we can schedule a time. And we'll go over how, how we started Town Hall, we go to Town Hall then. Oh, okay, okay. So while I was going through the, um, the street listing and the Magnus thing, one night I'd watched the selectmen's meeting, and we're talking about the house on Forest Street. That's vacant all over around. So it's two thirty-six Forest Street. So they said that, and I said, oh, yeah, I know where that is. And it's like, yeah, it is old ground, it's been like that forever, it seems. So then I was going through my listing, out on the list, just out two thirty-six Forest Street, the house was built in eighteen ninety. So it is a hundred year old house. And I do believe that's where more of the developments are going in, um, you know, right? So I contacted, um, Japan Yard, the building inspector, and asked him for his spots on this. And he gave some very good advice, um, that we, as the commission, reach out to the homeowner that owns that house first and alert them to the fact that it is a hundred year old house, a hundred year plus house. And that we do have the demolition by law, and that we're here, you know, to work with it. I meant to print that out. So what I can just do is I would rather be proactive on something or after, than always running to catch up and trying to put out the fires.
So the land hasn't been purchased. It's just a house sitting there.
I think there's, there's land in back of it that they're talking about developing. It's the apple farm, it's, uh, it's the apple farm off of Forest Street. There's a farm. And I tell you what, I'm not sure what the development is. But this is like on that property. So we have to find out some more, but definitely, um, we should let them know that it falls under the bylaws. And he also suggested that, which I think we had talked about too, is making a list of our most endangered homes here, you know, moving on. He suggested that the catalogs of the rundown buildings that may meet the requirements of the bylaw and open a dialogue with the property owners, which is one of our things to do is to help educate property owners so that we don't continue to lose these historic things. So, um, anyway, um...
Alright, can I ask a question about, um, demolition permits at the Dyke? Uh, when someone comes in and, but whoever it is, wants to demolish an old house, does the building inspector or commissioner, whoever it is, go look and see if it falls under the hundred year, you know, six month lay-in and all that stuff? Or do they just, if they're, are they ignorant or are they...
No, they know that he knows.
So they know that, you know, kind of issue where the English permit was issued prior to checking and see if it falls under.
Right, if it's if such disrepair that is not safe...
Right, that's a definition.
Right.
But, but in terms...
He's very aware of the bylaw.
I guess that's, that would be the procedure, when he first, um, get the request for, for the permit, someone comes in to the Town Hall. Building inspector, I would expect to look at it. And then he would go inspect it because he has to make a determination of whether it's unsafe or unfixable. Right, it's sort of the kind of thing, I guess that's what goes on there, hopefully.
I think, I think.
And then he would say the house is good, and it doesn't need to be demolished from his point of view. And then, then would, does he issue it? I wonder if he issues a demolition permit?
Yes.
Okay, so he would be...
Yeah, but he knows the bylaw and he knows the criteria that we have to go by. So if it's a safety factor, he can't say that it needs to be, you know, demolished at that point in time. Other than that, it comes to us for the six mark of the life. The point is to educate everyone before you get to that so that it's not a problem. You don't want the homeowner to all of a sudden, for whatever reason, they're gonna demolish the house, and they go to do that, and they go, oh, whoops, you can't do that because it's under a six, it has to go before the Historical Commission. You want them aware of that before they're ready to do their demolition. Before they're ready to...
Plus, can they have an overlay on it as well?
Yes, we would have to follow the bylaw, this is, we did with...
My question is about identifying properties that we determine are in disrepair. Is that, I put, uh, I'm wondering if it's the best way to go about it, or if we should be sending it to, you know, once we have a list and we know how old houses are, whether sending a blanket mailing to owners of the homes might be a more tactful way to go about it? Instead of saying, hey, your house looks like it's gonna fall down, we're watching it, you know? And I guess that would be my, not to say that something like that might come up, that we'd maybe talk to someone. But I, I think it's a good thing for people to know whether they're considering it or, you know, they could be a perfectly good house to get sold to a developer because they have eighteen acres behind them, whatever.
I think we're on the right track, we just have, um, and I think being... I think we're on the right track, we just have, and I think being tactfully very important, if we were at the Historical Commission where you can help you identify, you know, some possible resources for your home, your historical home.
Right.
You know what, my target for this house is they're at least a hundred years old. Maybe send them a nice letter, brochure or whatever, literature.
Right.
Explain to them, you know, how their house could potentially consider as a historical resource and stuff.
And we think we're the cool people reaching out to us about homes that are in great condition that they want to know more about and like to do things.
And they can use that letter from the Historical Commission just in case they would want to sell their house to property and so, so they can show up to you, you know, and stuff.
No, I think that's positive, we're involved in it. And I think if we let people know that we are here, I was even thinking like a brochure for ourselves, you know, to be there for the Historical Commission, this is our charge, this is, you know, what our responsibilities are. And in that would be that we should body lock a paragraph, so it would just kind of be, these are our historical districts that we have right now because we have the two national register historic districts, you know, these are what we have now. So we could draft something like that. It could even be general, you know, into the whole town, I don't know if that would be possible, just to the homes.
Just to the homes. It's too much money.
Yeah, this brochure is going to cost, yeah.
Interested?
No, it's a little bit.
Want to drop the letter?
He could, he could do that.
I could do that, yeah.
There's actually some samples online.
Templates, yeah.
Alright, so Sunday's, but.
Say on the store.
I think that's a great start. Okay. Bill asks that we take some time to discuss, are we all set on that? Everyone's good? Raffi, you don't want to work on the house inventory?
I'd love to, yeah.
Okay, I'll put it on.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, because we'll probably, what we'll have to do is separate without the most, have separate tasks, so. So I'm sorry, excuse me, is it? Raffi? Bill and Raffi down. Alright, Bill had asked to have this Cambridge Historical Commission website placed on the agenda for some discussion. Bill, you want to talk to that?
Yeah, we had talked at the last meeting, I might have been given an act, sort of action item about ways to defend historic properties from demolition. And so usually, I typically wait until the last minute. So I Google around and that kind of thing. And then this came up, this Cambridge Historical Commission, very cool, they have their own website, I mean, maybe someday we can do something like that. But what was interesting is they had done a lot of analysis on this issue about saving. It's probably in a city like that, there's a lot of properties that are, you know, valuable and historic and it's, they have to be maybe more serious than we are in terms of money or loss. I don't think so really. I think every town has something to lose when they lose houses regardless of it. But they did a really nice job. So they had some, it's interesting, for instance, that they have a six month delay as we do a demolition delay, but they had decided they wanted to up it to twelve months, so they must have gone through whatever and the, I think I voted yes on that. So given this issue with the virus and all that kind of titwash on, kind of seems unfair having that virus part as part of the delay window, I mean, it just seems, so if you had, the other thing is if you have longer, maybe longer terms, like twelve months, then maybe people would say, oh, well, I can't wait that long, so we won't tear it down. So, you know, there's sort of, so I'm just thinking, you know, these are maybe some changes we could look at. We could request twelve months over six months.
So anything like that, I believe, would have to go, you'd have to recommend bylaw change, you'd have to get it on the law and you'd have to.
Yeah, well, here's what's interesting, I don't want, I'm coming back to this here, but I was interested in what is the procedure of, so I went to the Town Hall and I talked to the BOS Secretary, Brady, I guess her name, his last name is Brady.
Yeah, can't.
And then she, because I asked some questions about how do we get things, how do we get elements or, you know, things, what do they call them? No, what are they, all the bullets, what's all the elements in the warrant? All those elements that are coming up with.
They're called articles.
What?
Articles.
Articles, right. So how, I ask, how do we, because I don't know, I know how the federal government works with the lobbyists and, you know, commissions and stuff, they have then the recommendation to the House floor on a bill, blah, blah, blah. And apparently there's, you, I'm aware that there's a hundred and a two hundred petition kind of way to get, you probably, I didn't know that. So if you have a hundred people, you write a letter saying, this is what I would like to see in a declaration, maybe goes to the BOS. And then you go out and get a petition with a hundred people who agree with that. And the town, the town has these periodic special, I think it's once a year in February or something.
Sometimes they have two.
So if you have a hundred, you would automatically go on the scheduled special. No, there's not one just for you. If you have two hundred, you, the BOS has to, unless it's not for one or something, has to, um, give you a special town meeting for voting on that, even if it's only one article on the warrant. So these are, I mean, these are the kind of things you need. Now, as far as the commission goes, the clerk was a little hazy about whether the commission has more weight, although a recommendation by the commission for that same element. Say it was somebody on the commission that got a hundred, whatever, or, you know what I'm saying? The commission itself cannot do what a single citizen can do on, in this basis. But it added, it would add weight to the vote perhaps if, if the commission said, we recommend this, just like the finance committee does. That's another question, I don't know.
The Historical Commission is an advisory award. So we are here to advise, make recommendations to the selectmen, to make recommendations to the planning award, the zoning award, the conservation commission as an advisory award. With putting something on the town warrant, you can't submit it to the selectman. I'm trying to.
How many signatures, I forget how many signatures, how many signatures can we leave for five or two to use?
I'm not sure, but we could definitely research that. I think for our purposes.
Explorers, are you talking about, like, something on the warrant?
If you're talking about, if you're talking about bylaw changes, that has to be a town meeting. That goes by an article on the town warrant.
Yes, but the trigger to this is what I think is interesting, is that, this is from the clerk herself, I talked to her one day, I think Monday, well, the first day they opened, I decided to go in. And if you have a hundred signatures, if you write out, you have to write out an email to her and, I don't know, I think she made, take the post and her to the BOS. And you say, I want to amend, it doesn't matter what it is, whether it's an amendment of an existing, existing bylaw or not, or it's brand new.
So, yeah. I want to get a staff on track, what type of.
Well, I just, I just wanted to interject that because if people aren't happy or the commission say that this is kind of leading from any changes that might occur based on a comparison to the.
I think we're kind of.
Alright, let's stick with the Cambridge then, if you want.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so there are a number of things, the delay of course, twelve month delay versus a six or something, maybe we should look at. And that's why I brought up the change procedure. If you can't change it or you don't know how to change it, or if you don't even agree that it should be twelve months, that, you know, nobody, everybody's different, you can't expect everybody in the town to feel the same way about something that you do or I do. Unfortunately, that's democracy at work. But I'm looking at some of these things that, I'm thinking, oh, that would be a good thing if people were agreed to that, twelve months would be better than six.
So, I assume James Prince Harris, this demolition has been delayed, this was, this was a demolition artist, sometime August?
The auction.
April, May, June, July, August.
August.
What about this auction thing?
That will be, will be done within the timeline.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we know how many people have gotten interested so far?
I'm not sure at what stage that it's at, if the whole autumn list is totally complete or if they haven't a date yet. So, but we'll be kept in the loop of it, so.
Alright, so finishing up here, there's a number of different things, they have this, something similar to a, what's called a historic lien, I think I talked about that, one of those, I said Massachusetts, it's one of the historic private groups that you can apply for that. You say this house here is, you know, is an important house and the owner, which will win, the owner has to start with the owner because it's going in their deed and it can't be removed. So it prevents demolition period for all, as long as the whole system is, unless it burns down. So they have, but the problem with that particular type with this one agency who has to enforce it, there's nothing that's any good that isn't enforced laws and so forth, is that they only accept very important properties in only one, one a year or something. Now Cambridge has something different, they have something that any home who has an old property and knows about this business that Cambridge has, they can issue something, a request for something similar. And I don't think the center, the enforcer is the Historic Commission of Cambridge. So any demolition permit would have to go through them because they, they say, oh, I'm sorry, but the homeowner has.
I believe Newberg or has something similar.
Really?
Yeah.
So it probably, I don't know if it goes into as a lien onto the deed or not, or it's just something that no demolition permit internally is issued to someone who has made that request as a home. I don't know how that works, but I can't imagine why we want that available to homeowners in this town. Because that alone would be one of the most powerful ones. Because people who own these houses, they must have, except for a few cases where they inherited maybe an old house that they wouldn't want otherwise, you know, there's a lot of reasons why people don't necessarily like or care about old houses, but they live in them or they own them. But it seems to me that in most cases, people, say people, say a hundred people own important houses in the town. Would those hundred, it'd be interesting to question, would those people be interested in doing that if it wouldn't cost them anything? They'd be protecting the house app from perpetuity beyond their stewardship.
Yes, and assuming somebody puts an agricultural limitation on their deed, like if they have a farm.
Yes, but those can be overturned by paying off the, I know about those.
Right.
By paying off, if you were to buy a home that has agricultural land that is for tax purposes, right, decreased tax is, is said as agricultural. Unfortunately, if I were to buy that property, if I were willing to pay all the taxes that the town didn't get for the years while.
Right, no, I.
I'd have to pay all of that.
But I was just saying, the same incentive exists, it's a homeowner who cares about what's going to happen in perpetuity.
Exactly, and it's quite effective because the Historical Commission who enforces it, say in Cambridge or, would you say?
I think.
Newberg. I don't think we have the power to do that.
No, no, and I think where we are right now, that's like way down the road for us.
See, I disagree with you?
Because, because there are steps that we need to go through now and part of it is doing that inventory, identifying what we have, noting what we have, letting people know that we're here.
I think, I think though, once you have a good list, that's important, absolutely important. However, I don't see you can be lenient or respectful because we've already lost three houses and what's next? So this is.
We've lost one of the three houses, when we go through the map list, we've lost more than three houses. There's quite a few houses that I don't want to go there. As I went through that, obviously I would say, oh, I remember that house. So yes, you know, the demolition piece of it is important. We have a bylaw right now, it functions for, right now. I don't know about a twelve month delay, I don't know about writing, we're writing bylaws right now, you know?
I think, I think, I think we have to start knowing about it because if this group, I made these statements before about the group, I think that, I think that we are very vulnerable because we have no real, for instance, a good friend of mine, he's in town, like his wife used to be the director of the Hill Collins Society in town. Anyway, he got himself elected onto the town Historical Commission. Well, when I told him I was thinking of, seeing if I could get an appointment to this one, and he says, well, I'm going to tell you right now, he said, and he's honest, and I'm being honest, that any commission that he's gone on or he suspects inviting would be the same is basically empty, except for the six month to twelve thing, that's about all we have here. As far as forcing, you know, as far as forcing your will, the will upon the government, you know, BOS is ultimately, they can interpret any, anything that we want and say, well, I don't like that, so goodbye. I mean, unfortunately, that's the kind of thing that you, I say vulnerability, our intentions of saving property is subject to attack by people who don't care or even don't like historic properties. It's not very fair to us as a group, but I'm saying we should, we need more things and that's why I bring that.
And that's why I think that as we go forward, we work on the inventory, we do things like that you talked about, we do things like the Boston, we're seeing that person, the Historical Commission out in the public eye, that gets you a reputation, that hold a honor of a bylaw group. Now, the demolition piece of it, I personally, I'm not ready to start talking about changes to the demolition bylaw. My experience with it, I'll tell you right now, is limited, but I'm willing to learn more about it.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we could start thinking about what that bylaw description, if we were going to write one, would be, would look like.
I think the commission would also, like, I think, I understand, you know, or, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what Pat said is we have a lot stored.
Right.
But if, I don't think anyone's saying that if a private citizen did something that the commission wouldn't want to weigh in on.
Right.
Some type of proposed article concerning historic homes, obviously we would.
Well, keep in mind it's to be voluntary by the homeowner, he's not going to be forced to have his house.
Right, you can't really force.
Right, so.
Bylaws are done, taking bylaws, those are about to get indicted? That's not state bylaws, is it?
No, it's for our town.
Every time.
The Massachusetts.
Two years.
The Massachusetts Commission was looking for bylaws from different towns or compiling They're compiling, um, you know, a database of different bylaws. So maybe we must take a look at that, because, um, I don't know if they put them on the website yet or not, but I know that they were working on it. So that is a resource, you know, we're looking at. So if you had anything else on the demolition bylaw? The bylaws there, the demolitions? One of the things, as I was reading in the preservation manual, um, was about rules and regulations for the Historical Commission. And then it was recommended that we have the rules and regulations. So I had to send them to you. Basically, it outlines our purpose, describes how we're confronted by the town, what happens when vacancies occur, elections, um, meeting times, meeting notices, um, how minutes are done. Some of these, it's all of our structural things that we do to help to make this function. And it's all in one place. So it would be like part of the pack like that. And we'd remember what we get, so they would know what to do. So they would know, you know, what the rules are and how we operate. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at them? Good idea, bad idea?
Haven't we related to the commission since nineteen seventy-three?
Yes, I found that record, yes.
We should start planning its fiftieth anniversary.
That's a great idea.
Really?
There you go.
You should get pins, man.
I think that's a great idea.
Anybody wants to talk to Alan, he's fifty-eighth anniversary.
Wow, that's really kind of private, so fifty years for the Historical Commission? Wow.
The accomplishment of what we've established so far.
Hope it's not that, yeah.
What accomplishment is?
So our purpose is, um, we were established in nineteen seventy-three under the Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty, for the preservation and protection of the historical heritage and resources of Dyton, Massachusetts. And these rules and regulations were prepared in order to further the internal management of the Dyton Historical Society.
Commission. Commission.
Commission. How do I just do that? It says commission and I read society. Um, does anyone have any changes, anything they would like to add? Comments?
That'd be good.
Um, do you have a motion to accept the rules and regulations of the Dyton Historical Commission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Rafa? Um, any other discussion?
I'll second it.
Hey, Rafa's second.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Extentions? Can I put this bringing wishes to the gases? Thank you. I think we spoke. Community and that festival tree, is having to talk a little bit about that?
Matt mentioned briefly that the Historical Commission doesn't really have a presence in town. And of course, the brochure that Nick's going to create for us.
Huge presence.
So that will make a huge presence. So one of the things I suggested to her, uh, every fall at Ojo's, when they had the large Lions crap there, there was a festival of trees. And they lined these trees up and different organizations put a tree into the fair. And it costs you the admittance price, and I believe it was twenty-five dollars. And then when people take chances on your tree because it's gorgeous and they have to have it, you get that money. All you initially put out is the admission fee for your tree, the twenty-five bucks. But say you made two hundred dollars on tickets, you get that two hundred dollars. And of course, it's a fundraiser for your organization. So the Dyton Historical Society puts at least one or two trees. Um, the Lions, usually they put a tree with, uh, raffle tickets. So the whole tree is covered with scratch tickets. There's a few bucks there. Um, different individuals could put their own tree in, but any organization, uh, Dali runs, Dali's on the Garden Club. It's a fundraiser for the Garden Club. So let's make believe that all of us here wanted to put a tree in and say we all had to give twenty-five dollars. The Garden Club gets twenty-five times however many people. So that's there, that's how they get money. And of course, the individual or the group or the commission or the society get money depending on how nice your tree is and if people want to take chances on it. Would that be something the commission would be interested in doing? Naturally, we're not all going to go there and decorate a tree, but hey, we could, whatever. Um, we would just need a theme for the tree that we wanted to do. And a small subcommittee could work on that. It's just a thought, it's a fundraiser type of idea. Again, more, yes, it's a fundraiser, but more to put the commission out there because we don't participate in very much that the town offers.
I love the idea. I question the, where the money could go. I'm sure we could designate somewhere, but I don't know if, and we might be able to. But I don't know if we're allowed to fundraise for our commit, our commission. Society asked about.
Well, um, what did Murni, what did Murni do with her?
Her calendars or?
Uh, calendars and her coloring books. She.
The calendars was the fundraiser for the segment.
But I don't know, she did that.
Right, like I think we could have a project that we designated it for, and that might just be the, we still get the.
The certificate?
Right, so you could pick something like that.
Would you like me to ask the town accountant those questions?
Sure.
Yeah, I think, just so we don't, you know.
Now, we have time, I mean, it's only July, and the festival is usually held even November one or November two. It's very early in November, it's right after Halloween. And if it's something you would consider wanting to do, I'm sure we could get a tree. Usually it's a lit tree with ornaments of one or a couple of, you know, themes. So there was a bear tree, there was an patriotic tree, there was a cooking tree, a peacock tree, you know?
That's cool.
So we could just think of something, or it could be something we want to do pertaining to the industry of the town.
Okay, I will talk to the town accountant. Uh, see.
So we'll know for next month.
Excellent. Our space at Town Hall, um, the key room, they started doing some things. It's now doesn't take three keys to get into the room. So our bylaw cabinet is still there and our box of archival exhibits is still there. And I, so I asked the building inspector, he had any idea where we would be? Now, they're talking about the renovation over at Town Hall, and I asked if we'd be able to space. And he said, um, not sure where it would be or, um, just exactly what that's all going to look like. So I asked very nicely for, to please remember us, that we need space and, um, to let me go.
Because I thought we did, didn't we have, so we shared. A mutual kind of, someone had said we wanted, I know I had it in the notes, if we would have a common computer setup or.
Can we talk about that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it's, that's still, you know, a process. It's not, okay, we don't know where exactly that's going to be yet. Along that, you know, too, we still have a vacancy, we need a seventh person on our board. So if anyone's interested, or those anyone is interested, please, like, fill out an application at Town Hall.
I didn't see on the website that it was.
Yep, good. Okay. Okay, is there any other business? Can I ask what CPC is doing?
Oh, um, well, right now, we're meeting in two days.
Oh, okay.
So not much happened, the last meeting was canceled because of COVID. So we're still working on the library and funding a playground, but everything's been on the move for a little bit.
I understand.
Can I ask one other thing?
Go, Dan.
Go.
Was anyone else beside me, um, was their commission expired in June? Did anyone else have to go to the Town Hall?
Yeah.
Who went?
I did.
You went. Did you read your letter?
Yeah.
My letter, uh, has the wrong dates on it. I just wanted you to check. Oh, I did already. I just wanted you to check.
Yeah, I should check mine, yeah.
Okay.
Did you check yours? She said twenty-twenty-three on it.
Yeah, mine says I'm, uh, reappointed for a three-year commission that expires in twenty-twenty-one.
Oh.
Yeah, so just change it with a typo.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Ellen, Jane, what's your order?
A second.
Okay. Ah, Werder.